Good evening and welcome to our council meeting tonight, Monday, August 10th, 2015, at 7 o'clock PM. Our opening ceremony starts the meeting, and that consists of the national anthem, the pledge of allegiance, and a moment of silence for those who have served our country. If you would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, Clerk Treasor Bettis. Would you please take the roll?
Mayor Walker.
Mayor Protimlitz.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin.
Here.
Councilmember McCarrick.
Councilmember Arnaski.
Here.
Thank you very much. Could you let the record show that Mayor Walker is absent and excused?
I will, thank you.
Thank you so much. On item number four on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Arnaski.
I move to approve the meeting agenda of August 10th, 2015.
Support. Moved and supported by Councilmembers Arnaski and Squires. Any questions from our council? From the general public? If you take the vote, please.
Councilmember Arnaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Protimlitz?
Aye. Thank you.
I don't know of any community events that have been turned in, but I do know of one that's coming up. Okay. Anyone have a problem if we bring up Katie Smith? Kate, you want to come up and announce yours?
Hello, my name is Katie. I live on Catherine. This Thursday at the Maplewood Center, I'm having a, or putting together a vendor show, I guess. It's free for the public to come. It's a fundraiser for Florence Park. All the money raised will go to Florence Park, so I'm hoping for a good turnout. Any questions?
What time?
Six. Six to 8:30.
When is this?
This Thursday.
Thursday.
Yep.
Will you be making your pies in a jar?
No.
I was just going to let the public know, if, when she sells them and you have the opportunity to buy her pies in the jar, I would highly recommend them. They are a great fundraiser and they're delicious.
I might do it for the chili cook-off, I was thinking.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember King, you have one?
Yes, I'd just like to let everybody know that today was the start of the Senior Olympics. It was wonderful. We had a wonderful amount of people there, real nice presentation, and boy, we're wishing them the best. They did have a little bit of rain today, but they should get through that.
Hopefully, we bring home some gold.
That would be great.
And silver and bronze, too. Those are fine. Okay. The next item is for comments from state and county officials. And Mary McLendon, would you like to come up for Commissioner LeBlanc?
Good evening, Mayor Protim, council members, to the clerk and to all in attendance. Of course, you know I'm from the office of Wayne County Commissioner Richard LeBlanc, who could not be here this evening, but I'm here. If there's anything that you'd like to send back to him, I'd be more than happy to take it back. Also, I want you to know that I was at the Senior Olympics today, and it was just wonderful, very well attended, and all the communities came through with their banners, and of course, we saw Garden City was there, and they had their banner, and it was just really wonderful. And it's really nice to see the seniors get so excited. They are excited about the Senior Olympics, so we're hoping that they'll come back with some gold and some bronze, all the different colors, but they're so excited, and hopefully that program will continue for the seniors. I just want you to know that Commissioner LeBlanc is working in your behalf. I know there's discussions about what goes on in the county, but rest assured that Commissioner LeBlanc is always trying to do what's best for his communities, so I just want you to know that. And thank you, it's a pleasure to be here this evening.
Thank you. Okay, item number nine, the consent agenda.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Arnaski.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Moved and supported by Councilmembers Arnaski and Squires. Are there any questions from our council? From the general public? If you take the vote, please.
Councilmember Arnaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Protimlitz?
Aye.
Moving into the study session. Number one is the supplemental appropriation for drunk-driving case flow assistance.
See.
See agenda? Item number two is the 2015 Water Main Crossover. We have A, B, and C, and if I remember correctly, we'd like to have a little bit of discussion and explanation on it, right?
Right.
Ryan Kern from Hennessy Engineers is here, and he'll be able to answer your questions and give you some information on the project.
Fantastic. Mr. Kern?
Good evening, council. There's three items on the agenda for the 2015 Water Main Replacement Program. There's, there's also item number four, I believe, that is on the agenda, that's the 2015 Water Main Lining Program. There's two separate water main projects that have been bid out here in the past couple months, the first one being the 2015 Water Main Replacement Program, which is a similar program that we completed late last year along Merriman Road where we installed brand-new water main by directional drill underneath Merriman Road where the road was recently rehabilitated. There's seven crossings that we did this year, so we're looking to continue that work this coming year with four additional intersections, and that's the Lawrence Clark contract that you see in front of you to be approved tonight. The other project is a water main lining project that we recently bid out that we only received one bid for from Liquiforce Services that were requesting a rejection on that bid due to the high prices that we saw, as well as just receiving one bid. That work is involving five intersections where it's a heavy commercial area where it's going to be difficult to install new water main, and we're looking to rehab the existing water main with a cured-and-place pipe lining, so I don't sound like there was a little confusion there as far as the two, which, which program was what, so.
Right.
So if you have any other questions, I can answer those.
A couple of questions, actually, and one of them was, did we do this before as far as removing, or pardon me, abandoning through the council? Did we have to accept that?
Yes.
It seems to me this is the first time it's come through.
Last year, or about this time last year, we had the same resolution come forward to council when we did the 2014 program. It's the same exact resolution.
It is, okay.
And the county does require that that's approved to get the permit to do the work. The county typically does not allow abandonment of mains. They usually want the removal of the existing mains, but since it's such a major thoroughfare, they'll allow us to abandon it with flowable fill as long as the council approves the resolution.
Okay, I understand that the Lawrence M. Clark of Belleville were the same ones that did the previous one, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, but yet, it's more. Is it because of the excess footage or what is causing the higher?
That's one of the reasons. The other reason, the middle belt crossings that are proposed, there's a lot of utilities in the ground, a lot more utilities in the ground than what's over in Merriman, so it's going to be a lot more difficult to get that pipe in, but also the footage of all four crossings is longer, especially the two at Merriman and Warren.
12-inch mains?
12-inch mains, yes. Yep.
Any other questions, you can council.
Okay, see agenda?
See.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kern.
Thank you.
Item number three, the assignment agreement with the City of Detroit and Great Lakes Water Authority.
Your Honor. If possible, I'd like to leave this on the B study session. I know that in the memo it states that it's pretty much the same language that we had with the City of Detroit, but I'd like for our city attorney to review it and get an attorney's opinion just to make sure everything is status quo and it is the same.
I agree.
And I would support that.
I agree.
Okay, so we're going to leave item number three on the agenda until next meeting. So we move to item four, which is the rejection of the bid from Liquiforce Services, which Mr. Kern explained. See agenda?
See.
All right. Well, now we're in the C agenda with item number one, supplemental appropriation, drunk-driving case flow assistance.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Squires.
I move to approve the following supplemental appropriation, recognizing revenues for drunk-driving case flow assistance, increasing revenues and expenditures in the amount of $10,000.
Support.
Moved and supported by Councilmembers Squires and King. Are there any further comments from our council? From the general public? Mr. Baco.
What is it? What is it?
Okay, Mr. Baco, the funds that are being transferred are part of the drunk-driving case flow assistance fund, and normally, they were paid directly from a separate escrow account, but now they're placed in the general fund and we have to allocate them appropriately. Okay? Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Weisack.
The amount that's in the fund is an annual fund and is, or what is the disposition of the funds if the year is up and there is additional monies available, or if you run shy, do you have to appropriate some other money from another account?
No, if I understand the question correctly, if there are addition, if there are excess monies left from revenues over expenditures, they go into our fund balance, the general fund fund balance, and they are restricted for that particular use, and so that's specific, that's specifically what this is doing. It's taking money that's restricted in our fund balance and it's moving it back so that it can be used in the general appropriation for the budget.
So there's a carryover from one year to the next?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? See, none, if we could take the vote, please.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnaski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Protimlitz?
Aye.
Moving on to item number two, the 2015 Water Main Crossover. We have three different motions, so we'll start with Councilmember King.
Do you want them all three at once, or you want to do each one individually? I move to approve the attached resolution to abandon water mains associated with the 2015 Water Main Crossover contract in accordance with correspondence from Hennessy Engineers Incorporated dated May 27th, 2015.
Support.
Moved and supported by Councilmember King and McCarrick. Are there any questions from council? From the general public, Mr. Baco?
Whose money is it? Whose money is it?
There's no money involved with this particular transaction.
Any other questions? If you take the vote, please.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Protimlitz?
Aye.
Now for the B portion of the Water Main Crossover?
Mayor?
Mr. Kerwin.
I move to authorize Lawrence M. Clark of Belleville, Michigan to perform construction services as described in the correspondence from Hennessy Engineers, Inc., dated August 5th, 2015, in an amount not to exceed $380,795.
Support.
Moved and supported by Councilmembers Kerwin and King. Are there any questions from our council? From the general public? Mr. Weisack.
Basically, it refers to the same question. The contract award is for 380-some thousand dollars, and what in the contract does it relate to any additional work orders that have to be authorized by the engineer and approved by the council? Is it included in, in the bid documents going out and the bid documents coming in?
Yes.
They are. In both?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? If we can take the vote, please.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnaski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Mayor Protimlitz?
Aye.
And C, the construction engineering services.
Your Honor.
Councilmember King.
Move to award a contract to Hennessy Engineers, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $38,485 in accordance with the pers, pardon me, proposal letter dated August 5th, 2015 from Hennessy Engineers, Inc.
Support.
Moved and supported by Councilmembers King and Squires. Are there any further questions from our council? Mr. Baco?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am. Who's paying for it? Are we paying?
We pay for it, yes, sir.
How?
It's an improvement to our water mains.
How come so much?
It's an expensive project.
There's money, it's our money, right? Why do you spend that much?
Because it has to be done. You couldn't get it done any cheaper. Any other questions? If you would take the vote, please.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnaski?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Mayor Protimlitz?
Aye.
And moving down to item number four, the rejection of the bid from Liquiforce Services?
Mayor.
Councilmember McCarrick.
I move to reject the sole bid received by Liquiforce Services on July 21st, 2015 for reasons explained in attached correspondence from Hennessy Engineers, Inc. dated August 5th, 2015.
Support.
Moved and supported by Councilmembers McCarrick and King. And this was something that Mr. Kern had expressed earlier to us. Is there anything further from council? From the general public? Mr. Weisack. Mrs. Weisack, I'm sorry.
You should never have a bid with just one bid.
And that's why we're rejecting it.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm glad you did.
Anything else? If you would take the vote, Mrs. Weisack has his hand up. I'm sorry. So I did see your hand up earlier.
Council is moving to reject. Was there any recommendation from anybody to accept the sole bid? Would that be the engineer or the planning commissioners, the only commissioner?
Everybody thought that it was a very high bid and thought that it should be rejected.
You say everybody, you're?
Everyone, to my knowledge, including Hennessy Engineers.
And then include the council now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Ms. Bettis, if you would take that vote, please.
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Arnaski?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
And Mayor Protimlitz?
Aye.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda. We're moving down into the public comment now. Please remember that there are five minutes, and Councilmember Arnaski will let you know at 30 seconds out so that you know when your time is up, and please just keep everything said in a positive way and nicely. Do we have anything from our general public? Mrs. Weisack.
What an uproaring meeting we had at the council meeting. Anything goes. No need to give your name and address when you come to speak, noisy, clapping, rah-rah-rah. Two people even yelled, "We don't have senior citizens." You should have sent them down to the county program today. Really, we don't have senior citizens, because I come to speak on who these added taxes are hard on, the seniors and the women, single women without mates who are on subsidized food. That really hurts them. So strange to me that they got away with all this, and I got thrown out one time for just saying one word, the Constitution. Then the King came up and stated, "We say hateful things and we don't have to prove anything." I have never come to a council meeting without having facts at home to back me up. I don't say it's something I fought, brought up, or something that I think, think could be. I have facts to back it. Dick King continues on calling us terrorists. We're, I'm a terrorist.
Mrs. Weisack, try to keep it a little more positive, please. We're trying not to attack people, so just.
Well, he attacked at us.
Okay, well, we're trying.
We have the right to make.
I just asked nicely if she could try to keep it on the positive side.
It's going to be negative, we have a right to say that.
What is more hateful than calling, he called us hateful people than calling somebody a terrorist, a terrorist, and his wife Pam King called us naysayers. I didn't mind, I considered the source, but I did mind that she quoted Abraham Lincoln to her advantage, which was wrong. He did not say, Abraham Lincoln said, "By the people and for the people," not "by the politicians and for the politicians." That's why he, that's why he got assassinated. The utmost hateful thing you can do is call anyone a terrorist. Dick King, shame on you. And don't put on your shirt at a council meeting. Take your shirt off. I had to sit right behind him. What is? That's enough, that's enough.
Thank you.
I'm not forgetting that, believe me. I don't enjoy that you call it terrorists. 87-year-old woman, terrorists.
Anyone else? Mr. Weisack.
And I'd like to know if my time starts for a woman?
Well, your time starts.
As soon as you start talking, I hit the clicker.
Well, yeah, that would be the case. You said something to my wife about negative because Mr. King used the word, not a damn word last year, last week, about what he did. And my remarks are about the man who would be king, Dick King, who thought he would smear me by saying I received a city pension. Instead, he provided a big reason to vote no. My pension is far less than many of the employees' ad-on dollars, ad-on dollars, not even including their pension. And now there are many making one and a half times what I make as a pension on alons. And when you sign all those contracts, their alons are going to be double my pension. I hope he enjoys trying to smear me with his snide remarks. And thank you goes to Al Buckner, as considerate, big-hearted, and intelligent, one-of-a-kind individual, unique to this community. He put forth his own money and extraordinary effort in his crusade to make our city better. He fought to the primaries and ignoring the odd call for snide and crude remarks hurled at him. I start thinking the good, and I think the good and hard-working resident taxpayers who cast no votes last week. Sadly, they now face putting out $9 million, which was not needed, and primarily will be doled out big time to non-residents and non-paying tax, non-paying tax money in our city employees. A big hug for Wendy. Over 70 years together, she has never ceased to amaze me, time and time again, wherever and whenever. The good people here have affectionately told her how accurate and stirring her council remarks are, and how much she is appreciated during the many years of goodwill and assistance to the less fortunate. She has been a wonderful, wonderful spouse. One can't forget the nights she was cooked out, kicked out at a meeting for no reason, and another when the mayor remarked that she should stay home. She should stay home. Thank you for, Mr. Fetter, for stepping up to run for mayor in the primary in soon in November. Now, I hope you're all proud of you, proud of yourselves for the kind, lousy government you are running.
Thank you, Mr. Weisack. Anyone else from the general public? Mr. Hunt?
Kevin Hunt, Garden City. I just wanted to come up and thank all of those people that did not make it back tonight, the 20 or 30-sold that actually came up here and spoke intelligently two weeks ago and pushed for our proposal and got it passed, and all of the things that they did cover at the time that seems to be a problem tonight, but there was a lot of intelligent people and a lot of facts put out two weeks ago, and I'd like to see those people come back. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hickman? Mr. Baco?
About three days ago, my castle woman, Ms. Noddy, I asked her, "If this marriage don't pass, you have to go broke in 2016." Go broke in 2016. You told me.
I'm sorry?
You told me, "Please, please talk to me." You told me, "If this marriage don't pass, you go broke."
Yes. 2017.
No, 2016.
17.
You got money to lose, and I, and I deeply asked her after it. I asked him nicely, "If you fix the roads," he said, "Ah, because of money." But you're going to spend money on the shoe line. I went, "Fix the roads first, that's a shoe line. You don't do that. You're afraid to stand up. Don't dare to stand up and fight." He said, "Okay, fix the roads first, that's a shoe line. You don't do that. You're afraid to do that for us." And I said, "Shoe line, shoe line, my roads are so bad, you don't care about that at all. We have a three in line." I just played.
Thank you, Mr. Baco. Mrs. Hickman?
Hi, Marge Hickman, Sheridan. I want to thank the voters of Garden City for doing what was right and supporting our citizens. I want to thank the voters of Garden City for doing what was right and supporting our police and fire. I made a comment on Facebook about how I believe that we have the best of the best. And I was told a story, and I want to share it with you, about a police officer. I'm not going to use his name because I wouldn't want to embarrass him. He was on duty and there was a gentleman, an older gentleman on a moped and was injured. Crashed the moped, something had happened. And he responded and needed medical attention. Our rescue came out, took him to Garden City Hospital, and the officer, from what I understand, looked down and thought, "What am I going to do with his moped? Can't leave it there." So he was about four or five blocks from Garden City Hospital and pushed it all the way, and it was a 95-degree day. But he didn't want to leave it, and he thought if he took it there, they could secure it till a family or friend could pick it up for the gentleman. Well, someone asked him, "Why didn't you ride it?" And that was my first thought, "Why didn't you get on it and ride it?" And I thought, "This is why we have the best of the best." He said, "It wasn't my property, and what if I damaged it? I wouldn't want to be responsible." So he pushed it, and the neighbors were commenting. A lot of people were coming out and commenting on this because then he had to walk back to his police car. That is why I say we have the best of the best. Now, someone responded negatively to this on Facebook, and when I went to respond to that comment, imagine it was deleted, and I was blocked from any of his sites. And at first, my feelings were a little hurt. And then I thought about it, and my children tell me I don't apologize enough. So I want to apologize to that gentleman who deleted me. I'm sorry if my honesty bothered him, but to be fair, his lies bother me more. And Mrs. Anaski, I'd like to congratulate your husband. I'm told that he's making over $1 million a year, and it must be true because I saw it on Facebook.
I only wish.
You know, what an achievement. I've never known any police officer, I don't know any state that would, anywhere that would pay over $1 million a year. But you know, it was on Facebook, so there must be some accuracy to it.
Last week, the joke was, I told everybody, yes, my husband might make, with overtime, you know, he makes, we make a nice living. But we donate a lot of money, like $950,000 back to Garden City every year, just because we love this community so much.
If it makes you feel any better, I told, I told my husband this story. I said, "Did you know that we have a police officer making $1 million?" And he was drinking his morning coffee, looked over the cup, and he said, "Well, he must deserve it, he must be doing a good job, honey."
Thank you.
Any other comments from the general public? Yes, sir, Mr. Mulner.
I wasn't going to say nothing, but voters, you better wake up and start voting. Terrible, what a lousy turnout. And I mean, if it's for the mayor and for the village, I mean, what, what else can incentivize, can get you to come out and vote? That can't.
10%.
Better wake up before it's too late, you wind up in Russia or Timbuktu or, you know, where you get to vote. If they say you do, if they say you don't, they chop your head off. This country better wake up too, because it's going down.
People need to vote, that's how I'm going to say it.
Thank you. Anything else from the general public? Okay, seeing none, let's, do we have a report from the city manager by chance?
The city manager sends his regards and was saddened that he couldn't be with us, and I am so honored to work for him, and could I please have a raise?
Well, put those zeros on the left side of your numbers. Thank you.
If the police officer can make a million.
That's right.
You should at least get a couple more zeros, right? Okay. Council comments. Councilmember Kerwin.
Yeah, I've been debating whether to say this or not, but anyway, you know, I would imagine if I retired 25 years ago and got, I don't know, maybe a couple thousand dollars a month, and the next person retires 25, 30 years later, they're probably going to make double that. And the next person that retires 20 or 25 years after that is probably going to make another good sum. It's just kind of, that's just the way it is. And you know? So unless I'm completely incorrect, I think that's the way things usually go, but other than that, I hope everybody here is feeling well, and thank you for all your comments. That's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarge.
Well, since the last meeting, my mother celebrated her 92nd birthday. And after she got done mowing the lawn, she came over to my house and she had dinner. But anyway, we're very fortunate that she's so very active and healthy, and, and I know we're blessed. But she also, at 92, made sure she got to the polls and voted. So 92, she can still get out to the polls, and she doesn't even do the absentee. She went, she likes to go to the poll. So please, I would really, really like to see more people take the time to vote. So it's what this community, what the state, what the nation does is very important to us individually. Take that seriously and please vote. A couple other things. I had some items in my garage that needed to be disposed of, so I Googled hazardous waste and, so I could find out where I could take it. And I found out that this Saturday, August 15th, Wayne County is having a household hazardous waste collection, and it is from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Westland Shopping Center, and it's the lot behind J.C. Penney's. So it's from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and so if you have garden chemicals, pesticides, antifreeze, motor oil, gasoline, those are just some of the items, you can take them and the county will dispose of them safely. If you want the list, you can, you know, Google. I just Googled household hazardous, I mean, waste and found the flyer, but I'm sure that Wayne County probably has a list also. So please be, be good voters, be good environmentalists, and get rid of your items safely. Then Wednesday, August 19th, at the Garden City Public Library, they're going to have someone from the Attorney General's office who is going to be speaking about home repair and equity scams. It's at 6:30 PM, and there's no cost to it. So again, to have, you know, all of us, when we try to figure out who's going to do windows or who's going to do, do our, fix our driveways, it's kind of scary. It is for me, I, you know, to make those decisions. So this is good information about how to avoid scams. So I hope you join us on that, August 19th. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Councilmember King.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to thank everybody who did come and vote. We'd really like to thank them a lot, but it is true, we have a really low number. It's not unusual, unfortunately, throughout the country. People have just gotten away from it. We need to encourage more and more people to do it. It's very, very important to have that. And as far as, I think you're mistaken, as far as you're stating that Dick King made that statement that you are.
What is it?
Terrorist. Terrorist? No, what he said was, people that come up and say things derogatory and have bad things to say all the time are terrorists, trying to train, or pardon me, trying to make things up for the whole city. And that's what he stated. You were never pointed out. If the shoe fits, though, you can wear it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Bettis.
I just want to go along with what Mr. Mulner said. It's so important that you vote and that you acknowledge the government that I think Mrs. Weisack was mentioning, the quote that says, "The government for and by the people." Well, that's not true if you don't vote. And so that's why we say voters rule. They literally are the ones who make the rules. And so we encourage everybody to vote. We don't, we clerks don't care how you vote. We want you to vote if you have an opinion. We want you out there. We want you to set that example for your children. We want to, this to, I hear people lament about how our country has changed. Well, perhaps part of that change is because people aren't encouraged to vote. So here in Garden City, let's set an example for our entire nation and have everyone who is eligible to vote come out and vote to encourage their teenagers that are over 18 and to encourage their friends and their neighbors and their parents to vote. We can make a way for you to vote, even if you have physical disabilities, even if you are going to be away from the office. We have people that vote for, from overseas. So please, 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 consider our country, consider our city, and, and vote. And thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mulner.
Councilmember Anaski.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to start off by passing my sincere condolences on to our library board member, Lynn Cox. Her husband, William, passed away on August 6th, and I would just like to pass along our condolences to Lynn. Also, I'd like to mention that the Department of Community Resources is hosting a Get Covered, Stay Covered Health Insurance Enrollment Event this Saturday, August 15th, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM at the Maplewood, Maplewood Community Center. If you or your child do not have health insurance coverage, this is an opportunity for you to get enrolled. You may qualify for low-cost or no-cost health insurance through the Healthy Michigan Program and not even know it. A family of four with a total yearly income of $51,410 can qualify for low-cost health insurance for their children for just $5 a month. Train staff and volunteers will be on hand, be ready to help you complete your online application, and you might even be approved on the spot. If you'd like to participate and this is something that you're interested in, make sure you have all the birth dates of everyone in your household, social security numbers, and you will need tax information. Also, I'd like to mention that the Garden City Rotary Club is going to be collecting school supplies again for our Garden City Public School Kids. You can drop off donations at Garden City Hall, where else are we at? The library and at Cambridge Center. Final drop-off date is going to be on Monday, August 17th, and the backpacks are going to be filled on the 20th. Last year, the Rotary Club was able to pack 125 backpacks and give to students in Garden City, and this year their goal is 150. So hopefully, with everyone's help from the, or in support from the community, we can reach that goal. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Councilmember Squires.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a few things here. First of all, as Katie mentioned earlier, if you like vendor shows, it's a fundraiser for Florence Park this coming Thursday, August 13th, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the Maplewood Center to raise money to do more for Florence Park. There'll be vendors there, Pampered Chef, 31, Sensi, just to name a few, and Crafters also. So if you get a chance, come on out. Also, I had the opportunity to have a date night with my son last Wednesday night and attended the first United Methodist Church in Garden City concert series. The Optimistics were there doing all the old 50s and 60s songs, and they were just awesome, absolutely awesome. And this Wednesday, August 12th, they're going to have the Harmony Town Chorus, who are barber shoppers, so if you like that kind of music, go on out. And on August 19th, which is following Wednesday, they're going to have a harpist, Charles Walker. And then they will be rounding out their series on August 26th with their annual Ice Cream Social, and they will have music by the Big Band Express. Okay, and then just another couple of things, and then we can move right along.
Good.
Since the election is over, all election signs need to be down and off your front lawns and not put up again until 60 days prior to the general election. I've seen quite a few signs around, you know, still sitting there. And also, hats off to Officer Breen. He's been handing out Slurpee coupons to the kids in the park and even on the street. And the kids are just thrilled with it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Baco, I wanted to make a comment. When, I know that you're disappointed that your road hasn't been done in front of your house. I know that the DPS is working on roads because I see the orange barrels sitting around in Garden City. I know that one of the manhole sections that was collapsing, they're working on that at Ford Road in Farmington. I've seen the cold patch that they've put in holes. Unfortunately, probably the work that needs to be done on your street is probably something that would be $500,000 to $1 million to repair the road itself. And we don't have that kind of money to be able to fix all of our streets. That's why it's in a rotation. And DPS has gone through, and they have a priority list, which is the worst of the streets, and we're working down that list of streets. It's going to take us a month of Sundays to get through it, of course. However, they are working through it. So if you have just simple holes that can be filled with cold patch, let Mr. Roney know about it. But if it's more work than that, it's going to take a while to be able to replace something like that because we have to charge the residents when we fix streets. We only have so much money, and we don't have the money right now. We're working to make sure that Hubbard gets taken care of as soon as we can get that done. That's the next one on our priority list. As far as voting goes, I too want to thank the residents for renewing the police and fire millage. Ran into a lot of people that were very happy that it was renewed, and then I ran into a lot of people who were going to vote for it and forgot it was election day or was going to do it later in the day, got busy, went on to something else. And I just want to remind the residents, you can get an absentee ballot if you work during the day. You're out of town, you're not sure when you're going to get off. You, you're going to be up north, you're going to whatever. Make sure you get that absentee ballot because there's no reason then that you didn't vote if you have good intentions towards voting. And I also want to congratulate our newest detective sergeant, Billy Smith, who was promoted today. Congratulations and welcome to the Detective Bureau. And with nothing else to come before our council, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.